It is very fun to watch at home, so thank you for keeping doing this. My first thing I want to talk about is adding two additional commissioners to the city commission. I just want to encourage you to put it to the citizens to vote. As Jed was saying, it has gone through a task force and city governance is not a topic that gets people super riled up usually. You may, I mean, maybe you're getting a lot of emails about it, but I think that would be a great way to get the public's input on it would be to go to a vote. And then the second thing, and my last thing, don't worry, to talk about is something that I think could strengthen the city's system is by adding 360 reviews for the department heads of the city. I found out that's not common practice for 360, like staff inputted reviews for department heads. And I learned that the more head side is just starting to implement that. And it was hard to wrap my head around how you could set really good leadership and management goals without getting input from staff that works for that leader. So I would encourage you to explore that and implement that to really strengthen our city. And as you consider hiring a city, a new city administrator, to keep that in mind if they can implement widespread projects. So I'm hoping you find just a really strong city administrator to, to implement something like that. So that's it for me. So one, just urge you to put the adding two commissioners to, two more commissioners to a vote in November for the citizens to weigh in on that. And number two, considering 360 reviews for your department heads where staff can give input just to strengthen our city. Thank you so much.
Mayor and Commissioners, on tonight's agenda is a discussion of 32nd Avenue South and relating specifically to a right turn lane. 32nd Avenue, of course, is a wide arterial and what wide arterials do is split the city. They're very difficult for pedestrians to cross and that has long been a problem. In the future, any future development along 32nd Avenue will certainly be more dense than the current development, which means that more people will want to cross 32nd as pedestrians. So I believe it is important to narrow the expanse for pedestrians across 32nd Avenue and eliminating the right turn lane is one step toward doing that, especially since I think we heard two weeks ago that it would not decrease the level of service for vehicles on 32nd. For future projects, I would implore you to think about pedestrian safety as a most important part of any consideration. And perhaps a, an overall goal is when you think about things like arterial streets, think about a conclusion that will knit the city together, not split the city farther apart. Thank you.
Terrell Boxley.
Last time I was so nervous. Hello, Commissioners. I'm not here, I'm not here for myself. I'm here for the people that will be affected by the commission's decisions to limit or restrict food vendors in a free market after dark. Okay? Last time I was here, I offered, and the offer is still available, any of the commissioners to come out and experience the nightlife as countless other of your constituents do. They come out every weekend, every night, well, mostly on the weekends. Okay? May 29th, 2000, oh, sorry, May 29th, 2022, I'm a food vendor downtown and I saved a father of five at 12:55, 12:55 a.m. In fact, the doctors quote were quoted by saying, "This food vendor's quick action saved his life." Okay? There's more to it, but I'm not going, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. I'm just telling you what I did to make a difference for our city. Again, as I say, I welcome the commissioners to come down and eat. Try a bomb dog, my specialty. You will be in a safe space. You don't have to worry about the riffraff and all like that. It's not as bad as that. But as I, I will have you know, since we know about what's going on, we've been doing it, we've actually been doing a petition for the last two weeks and we have a thousand plus signatures, a thousand plus signatures. The people, I could just say like this, the people don't want the food vendors to go. If you were to come downtown and find out and ask questions for the people that are not at home after nine, okay? Come down and ask questions and experience what Fargo is like at night because we're making a difference, the food vendors make a difference. A sober, a sober, thank you.
Thank you guys for giving me a little bit of time to talk today. What I will do is kind of piggyback off what Terrell was saying. I myself am a vendor downtown during the nighttime. We are there late at night, but the last time I was here, I also asked, "Come see us. Come talk to us." Not only myself, talk to the people, like he said, that come out every weekend or every other weekend, or maybe they have a family and they don't get that opportunity to come out every weekend like somebody who has less responsibilities, kids, college kids. But that opportunity that they get to come out when they don't have to worry about kids, they are able to maybe push those responsibilities to the side as all you guys have in your lives. They're able to come down and maybe they see someone that they haven't seen in a while. Those interactions within the, excuse me, within the community mean something, not only to myself as a fly on the wall of seeing the people that have those interactions on a weekend, weekend basis, but for them to have that experience. Or again, going to some of these younger kids, maybe someone had a little bit too much to drink. Instead of wandering around the street, if we weren't down there, maybe they meet some random person that they can have a conversation with in line, or someone that they can create a new experience with in line. What you guys are trying to do by setting these arbitrary times and taking this away from Fargo will not be a net positive for what we're trying to do downtown. And again, we implore you, get out if you can. Again, I understand you have responsibilities, but there are people that would like to meet you within this community. I said it last time, I barely know any of you. How are you going to govern people and make decisions on a market for people that don't even get to see you? I spend more time downtown than I do in my own apartment some weeks, interacting with people. How have I not seen you for four years? I haven't been doing this that long. There's people that have been doing this a lot longer than I have. And if you can't see the positive impact that we are making within this community, and this is not some self-service of, "Oh, we're doing this." No, we love interacting with the people within our community. That's what this is supposed to be for. That's why Fargo continues to grow when you see other, other big cities or other cities like this continuously decline, especially over the last two years. So again, come see us. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Randy Williams. I've been a Fargo resident for quite a while. I've lived downtown now for 11 years and I've seen a lot of positive changes made throughout those 11 years. Lot more people coming out, a lot more families coming downtown. One of the positive changes I have seen was the food vendors coming downtown. It's nice being able to get a snack after bar close. It's nice to be able to go out, meet people, see people, have those interactions. There's a lot of people who, you know, wait for a ride after bar close. They get down, they, you know, bar shut down, everybody gets kicked out. While you're waiting for your Uber, your Lyft, whatever, instead of just, you know, wandering, you have places where you can go get food, sober up maybe a little bit, make yourself feel a little better, have a bottle of water, whatever it may be. But I just feel like that's been a positive on Fargo. I, like I said, I live downtown. I enjoy their presence there. I have friends who are bartenders who, you know, will run out right around bar close after they get the people out of the bar to get a snack so they can have something to eat, you know, before they go back to work and work for four more hours cleaning up the bar. You know, feel like it's a good thing for the community. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Forgot to make the announcements this week. August 1st through 7th is World Breastfeeding Week, a time for communities to come together and show support of breastfeeding. Fargo-Cast Public Health provides resources for individuals and businesses to support breastfeeding. Library. Teens May Make Tie-Dye T-Shirts Tuesday at Carlson Library and Wednesday at the Main Library. All materials will be provided and pre-registration is required. The library's annual summer reading challenge continues through August 20th. This year is themed Oceans of Possibilities and participants of all ages are encouraged to read every day to complete challenges, earn badges, and win prizes. Last Friday, the Joint Fargo-West Fargo Fire Academy celebrated the graduation of five new firefighters here in Commission Chambers, four for Fargo and one for West Fargo. Welcome to Team Fargo, Brendan, Jeremy, Chase, and Matt. And congratulations to Erica for joining West Fargo. The Joint Academy is truly a win-win for both communities as we work together to recruit, educate, and retrain our best and brightest. We will now show you a short video showing their training progress.
We see this as just a great opportunity for our departments to work together at the beginning of your careers so that you start to know people from the other departments as well, so that we see in the future a lot more seamless work between our two departments.
During this time, everyone's looking at you. It's really about your character right now because you've proven that you're smart enough because you passed the test, right? You know, we hire on character. We hire for people we know are going to take the torch and pass it. It's been given to us from people that, that worked in these departments before us as public trust, right?
Because your learning starts today and it ends when you retire. It never ends in between. So every day is absolutely a learning day and treat every day like that.
It's a lot of practice that I hadn't had before as much. In the volunteer experience, we had to put it on, but it's different with being at the station all the time. You have a lot tighter time to get your gear and get on the truck.
I think my biggest growth has been throwing ladders, working with that primarily because in previous experience, we just didn't do much of it. So the amount of time spent on, on ladders on the training grounds has been awesome in order to get that muscle memory and be good at it.
Live burns have been incredible. Live burn number one especially has been probably the biggest teaching moment for me. You know, seeing the different phases of fire growth and the different examples of flashover, rollover, things that could put a firefighter in extreme danger. You can read about it in the textbook or, you know, kind of have an understanding about it until you actually see it, feel it, and experience it. I, I mean, it was the most incredible training I've ever experienced.
It's certainly not just putting water on fire, so it's been fun to learn it, see it, do it, and then obviously with the live burns, be able to apply it. So it's been a good learning experience. Being in all the different spots, it certainly makes you appreciate what the other person is doing. Everybody wants to be on the nozzle, but obviously the grunt work still has to be done too. So being on all sides of it is certainly really good to become better at what you do.
It's kind of cool seeing, you know, everyone has their own different missions at the end of the day, but we all just intertwined, you know, have seen how each other works and, you know, we kind of rely on other departments and kind of seeing how they work is sometimes you don't always see it, but kind of doing those like ride longs with PD or with the ambulance, you can really see that we all have the same kind of mission at the end, just different ways of going about it, helping people. And it's been a pretty good experience kind of seeing it all kind of come together at the end.
The entire experience has been awesome. You know, that work hard, play hard attitude has been the epitome of our academy class and seeing Captain Kankel Fritz and some of the other training captains kind of jump in with us and joke, but you know, when it's time to get serious, everybody has that game face. And I, I think it's a pretty good indicator of where our class has, has grown to and where we started, you know? And I, I think we're all very comfortable with one another and looking forward to seeing
Very good. Item 30, Public Input Opportunity, Urban Plains by Brant, First Edition, Uptown Way South, 2901. Approval recommended by Planning Commission 7522. A zoning change to repeal and reestablish conditional overlay in a limited commercial zoning district and the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. Megan to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item before you is Urban Plains by Brant, Fifth Edition. This item also includes an ordinance prepared by the City Attorney's Office, which is included in your packet. This application is located at 2901 Uptown Way South, which is Lot 4, Block 1 of Urban Plains by Brant, Fifth Edition. As you can see here on the aerial image, Veterans Boulevard is just to the west. On the north side is 28th Avenue and the south is Cedar Parkway South. In, on the east side, directly east of the subject property is Uptown Way, which is a private drive, which is where access would be taken into the property. Images up on your screen show, the top image is on the avenue looking north and in the distance, just behind directly north of the subject property is McAllister's Deli. And the image on the lower part of your screen is along the trail of Veterans Boulevard looking southeast towards the subject property. This application is requested modified, the conditional overlay, which is ordinance 5153, to allow you, the use of limited vehicle service. No other changes are proposed as part of, no other changes with the conditional overlay are proposed as part of this application. At the July 5th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the commission discussed the history of the restriction of the vehicle, limited vehicle service use in urban plains as well as the compatibility of such a use within the development. The Planning Commission recommended approval with a six to three vote. Staff has not received any inquiry on the application and the recommendation is stated in the staff report and up on your screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the zoning change? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If no, not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion and then I have a question.
Is there a second?
One second.
Commissioner Preston, question.
Megan, can you talk a little bit about the three dissenting votes and why they were?
Sure. So a lot of the discussion, there was a bit of a discussion at the Planning Commission meeting that had to do with the, the history and with this prohibited use began with the initiation of the conditional overlay, which I think is a couple of decades old. And the commission talked about walkability and for limited vehicle service use has to do with uses that you would drive a vehicle to, and so there was questions on the walkability. Within the conditional overlay, there are certain design standards that staff explained that include pedestrian connectivity as part of that. So there was discussion mostly on those topics.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow.
Commissioner Preston.
If I remember correctly, there was also an issue about vehicular access back there and the fact that there's a Starbucks with a line for picking up coffee and those kinds of things. Am I correct?
That's correct. The commission did talk about the Starbucks on University and the stacking of that location. That location does meet the land development code for stacking spaces. There was also discussion on this property and how access into the site would occur, which would be through the private drive. There would be no access off of Veterans Boulevard. And so up on your screen, though it's, I believe there today, there is access that, just like it is to the north, the private drive is extended to the south and will be taken from that private drive.
Commissioner Strand. Oh, I'm sorry, that's your answer. Any other questions? We'll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Polpak?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. I'm 31. A request for resolution of necessity for acquisition and easements for the properties 131 South Woodcrest Drive North, 137 South Woodcrest Drive North, and 149 South Woodcrest Drive North. Oh, I got Brenda Derry instead of Tom Aquos. Sorry. Brenda Derry.
Good evening. Well, you would have had Nathan, but he is on vacation today.
Okay.
So you get Brenda today. Today I'd like to visit with you and update you on our Red Woodcrest Flood Risk Management project that we are working on. And so we have been working on the design of this project. We have an earthen levy that will be placed on some of the lots where we've already historically bought, prior to this time bought out the houses, and then installing the new lift station at the end of the cul-de-sac. We will be pulling that cul-de-sac in a little bit and shortening that roadway to allow that levy to go around that south side of the cul-de-sac. What this will do is currently we have three outfalls with one lift station that's closer to the VA hospital and this will combine all those storm sewer, storm sewer runs into the one lift station in the cul-de-sac. And so as you can see here, the blue shaded areas designates the post diversion 100-year flood plain plus the appropriate free board. And this is to make sure that we would not need any emergency measures during a 100-year flood event. So this is a standard that's been applied when we adjusted from a 35-foot event to a 37-foot event through town. This is the criteria we've used when we brought in the additional project. So last year we did three projects on the north side and now we're working on this one. So there's been quite a bit of communication. So this is just a timeline. So this is just a timeline of where, how we've gotten to this point. So in 2018 is when the diversion submitted the permit for the Plan B project. And then later on in 2018 is when we had the commission informational meeting to talk about the additional areas in town that we'd be needing flood protection on with the 37-foot going through town. At this point, we did invite all of the impacted properties to that meeting back in 2018. And then in December of 2018, at the very end, they issued the permit for the Plan B diversion. Then in 2019, we approved the contract for Houston to start doing the design in Woodcrest Edition. We had our first neighborhood meeting in August of 2019. And then in December 11th of that year, we had the second neighborhood meeting. And so those neighborhood meetings we had at the library and then we would go through the different layouts and then kind of walk through what they would be seeing. So then in January, we did come to the commission again to provide an update on the development of the Plan B and the in-town levy projects. And then we invited the properties to attend that meeting also. And that was all the different additions in North Fargo that had come in to need flood protection after that 37-foot decision. So then in February, the commission did approve the recommended levy alignment. And so we started working on the associated property acquisitions. In June 24th of 2020, we did have a neighborhood walkthrough. And when we do the neighborhood walkthroughs, what we do is we have the consultants stake the levy location and then how high the levy will be. And then we walk through the rear yards and kind of will hold up our, our, our laugh and just kind of so they can see what that elevation will look like and try and visualize it the best we can. So on June 24th, then we had our third neighborhood walkthrough. September of 2021, we did finally get the appraisals completed. And then since then, and then November, December of last year, we mailed out the extended offers. We have been negotiating since. In June of 2020, we did get to the point where we could start on the east side of the project. So from the lift station going east, the phase one, we were able to start on that one. We did award that contract. And so here's a, the depiction of, you can see the red line there and that's from the lift station going east to north. That is under construction today. And then going to the west, that is to be determined. And so for the project, we have acquisitions that are necessary for the project. We have completed the seven full property acquisitions. We have eight easements that are needed. Two do have agreements that are executed. And so we have three remaining easements that we need to have the project move forward next year. So you can see here, the purple properties are the acquired, we've already acquired all the easements on those. The yellow ones are the properties where we need easement still. And then the blue are where we have agreements already in place. We just haven't finalized the easements. So tonight, we're asking for a recommended motion to approve the resolution necessity for the acquisition of the easements on the properties at 131, 137, and 149.
Without motion?
And I would answer any questions.
I'll make the motion.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Preston?
So Brenda, can you go back one slide again? Just explain. So when you're talking easements, you're, you're talking not the entire property, just the easement for the dyke?
Correct. So where you see the contours, this darker shade here, that is where we need the easement on their properties.
So can I ask, is it, I mean, are we far apart on price? Is that the issue or is it something broader and bigger?
So some, some of them have been a little bit farther in price. I think it's even just getting the conversation to have a very active negotiation. We just haven't even gotten to that point yet. We've done some reach out and then the city attorney's office is doing reach out. We're, we're trying to engage in very active negotiation. And we've just been struggling to this point. And so we really need to keep this moving forward with the hopes that we'll get more active negotiation.
So I'm, I'm sorry, one more question. So I'm, I'm used to listening to the diversion authority and how long it takes to go through this process. It sounds to me like this is six months. It sounds fast.
The process, the length of process?
Yeah. Because you started negotiating the beginning of this year, right?
Yeah. So we started, we sent out the first offers last November or December.
Okay.
Is when we sent, sent them out. And we have been reaching out and we have been able to acquire some, not all. And so we've got the three remaining and we really need to keep the process moving. And so that's why we're here today for the resolution necessity. We still want to keep negotiating. We still intend to keep negotiating. We just need to keep those conversations active even while we go through that eminent domain process.
And how long does it usually take? Well, I think she's asking, it sounds like six months is really quick. It is, how long do they have from the moment we do this?
Nancy might have, I think the cases are quite a ways out, is my understanding.
Typically, we will not be using a quick take process, so we will be filing the complaints. But there still are some ongoing negotiations. We hope to resolve these matters in the very near future. Other than that, it's starting the legal process and we can expect that it will be in the courts for a period of time. I would say at, at a minimum, six months, but probably longer.
It can take quite a bit of time. We'd like to do the project next year, so that's why we have to do this. Any other discussion?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Strand?
Sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner.
Brenda, I'm just curious. I, I'm going to tag along with what Commissioner Preston. Define easement for me again, please.
So the easement is the ability to put the levy on their property. They still own the property. They still mow the property, but it's the ability for the city of Fargo to have that flood protection, the levy on their property. And so some of the things we do on the walkthroughs is we'll do an alignment. Maybe there's some minor adjustment that we can do. We try and do some of those adjustments in our walkthrough.
And further, define for me impasse. Are they all the same? Is it all monetary or is it, they just don't like the project or what, what's the nature of the impasse with these three properties?
So.
I can jump in. I've been negotiating with some of the property owners. I think that we're just moving forward to, to resolution. Impasse in terms of we haven't reached it now, when it was appropriate to bring the resolution to you, they've been advised that the resolution is coming forward, but that negotiations would proceed.
Lastly, and, and do they know that our next step conceivably would be eminent domain?
Correct. They are aware of that. And mostly we're, we're still trying to catalyst the conversations. We're just struggling getting some of those conversations going.
Mr. Strand, we had 28 homes that we've come down to. Basically, we've bought over 200, 250 homes. So it's just in some cases, we've had to do that. And the 27 homes is down to less than five. And you may have some other homes come before you as well to finish that off, but we have not a lot of properties left to do. My neighbor next door has a dyke in his backyard. He mows it, does things. It protects us every spring, so. Commissioner, call back.
I was going to make a similar comment. I know these are difficult conversations, but I wanted to commend the engineering department and the staff on having these one-on-one conversations with homeowners. To date, the city has purchased 300 homes and/or negotiated easements and has resulted in only two court cases. So I think that speaks really well for the engineering department and the city attorney's work.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pepcorn?
So the, the key thing is these three people, all the houses on the other side of them, they're jeopardizing them if we have a flood. That's the bottom line. So these three people, all those, all those lots that you see there are in jeopardy because of that. Once we finish that, then they'll have flood protection. So that's the big thing. And we've obviously been doing payouts for a very long time. And so, like you said, the engineering department and the negotiators are going to have a special party when they're done and we're down to less than a handful. So that's great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Got to catch you guys all the time right now. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpack?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Item 32, Recommendation to create a fact sheet, modify the process to require residents to contact engineering prior to starting work on sanitary sewer repairs. Kevin Gorder is going to explain this, but I think it was a good catch by our engineering department of what's going on in sanitary sewer department. We do have some services and financial ways to aid people, but he was noticing that people were getting higher bids that really were not necessary for them and wanted to come up with a better process so we help protect our residents. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Yeah, as the mayor said, we've kind of been watching a trend in, in our sanitary sewer services. Now, this is the service from the house to the main. Okay? So it's just the part that's in the private. And it is 100% the resident's responsibility for that portion of their sanitary sewer service. The city maintains the main and all of the lift stations, but that little piece is each resident's responsibility. So some of the, some of the things we're trying to get out to the public, and we've added some stuff to our website, it is in the wastewater section of the website. So if you're looking for sanitary sewer, it's in the wastewater section. Engineering gets involved because they need an excavation permit through the Chapter 18. So we get involved and we're out there all the time with these guys, checking traffic control, verifying that they're following specifications. So that's how engineering gets involved. Auditor's office gets involved because they're doing the participation part. Inspections gets involved because they're doing the inspection on the private property. So there's a lot of people are touching this and we've been kind of huddling for a while, trying to figure out a way to maybe manage this a little bit better. So right now, the current participation, the way the policy is set up, we pay half of the first $4,000 and a quarter of the remainder. So the average participation is right around a third, give or take. So it depends on the cost, how much we're, we're participating. And then after that, the property owner can have the remainder assessed to their property and make annual payments for 15 years. So that's, the city is trying to help the residents do all of these things. And we do probably 260 to 340 of these a year, just kind of a ballpark. It varies from year to year. So I'm not really here to talk about changing the part, this part of the process. This would be a budget process. This would be looking at wastewater and the utility and do they have money to do it? That would be up during the budget process. So I'm not proposing any changes to the participation amounts or how that goes. The part of the process that we would like to suggest some changes is the current process, they ask the excavator, the plumber, they go out and arrange for the repair. Many contractors have this paperwork available, so the property owner doesn't have to do anything. And we get calls in various departments where the residents confuse, what do you mean? It's $15,000 and I have to pay 1,200, $1,400 a year for 15 years? I wasn't expecting that. Or we get them where this is a city project. Well, it's not really a city project. It's city, the city helps reimburse some of the costs, then they allow you to assess it. There's a lot of confusion in our residents as they're trying to figure out how to manage their sanitary sewer service. So I'm going to say this, and this is going to sound kind of funny, but we want to slow the process down. We don't like to do this very often, but we feel like we need to be more involved upfront. So we'd really like to create a process where they have to contact us first when it's not an emergency. If it's an emergency, they have to fix it, right? But if it's not an emergency, can you reach out to engineering? We'll get to the right, the correct information to our residents. They can make informed decisions. We can give them a ballpark number, which will be pretty accurate for how much the city will participate in, how much is left, and what is the yearly payment on it? And we can give the resident all of that information. So we're going to set up a little inbox for, for people to mail it. They can call us. We can try to figure out how to make it easy to communicate with us and to get this information out. The other thing we can look at is on our rehab projects, we are putting, putting this stuff in from the main to the Boulevard. So if there's a rehab project coming up and somebody has a sewer that could maybe last another year and there's a project next year, it'll go in with the city project. They don't have to pay for it. So there's some things that we can look ahead as well when we do things like this. So, and then we can work on the backend with the paperwork once we're done and, and, and kind of close up the deal on all this stuff. So that's my short presentation. If you have any questions on this, I can certainly try to answer questions. If you have other recommendations or anything like that, we can certainly do that.
Any questions by the commission? Commissioner Preston?
It's, I'm glad to see this. I had a couple of conversations with people in the community who, and I'm trying to remember, this is probably about a year ago, where I think it was a child of a parent where the individual had been approached by a contractor that was doing work in their neighbor's house. And the question came up, why are they approaching them? And it felt a little predatory. So this is, this is, I think, a really good move. The question I have is, what about water pipes?
As far as replacing them? So the city maintains the water service from the main to the curb box, the stop box. And then it's the resident's responsibility from there on.
Right.
The stuff that's under the road, the really expensive part, is maintained by the city.
Okay. Okay.
And I took a call today for that exact thing that you're talking about. Contractor stopped by, I wanted to work my sanitary sewer. I talked on Friday, I took a call about, is it really this much? So in two days now, I've had two calls.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. With 260 to 340 of these calls for service per year, how many of them are emergency and how many are not? Would you guess?
That's a really hard number because they, they like to call on emergencies when they really aren't. And that's kind of how they push it along. So to me, an emergency is when you have sewer in your yard, in your house, if you will, your, your property. I don't think it's 10%, but I don't. I mean, I don't have a way to really figure that out unless the resident tells us that. So.
I guess my question gets to this, is is there a way to be more proactive? Because we want folks to anticipate when they buy a new house, check your lines, see if there's cracks and breaks, be, be forward thinking, know what your issues are. Is there a way to, to, to modify the cost share just to incent people to be proactive and reduce the emergency situations later?
There probably is. I mean, you know, you could pay more, but then you got to find the money on the backside to have the funds to do it, of course. But I think there probably is a way. I mean, they tend to be in neighborhoods, right? As the stuff gets older, that's when it starts to fail. The new stuff is PVC, so that should last a little longer. But, you know, it is some of the older neighborhoods that are, are experiencing the majority of the breaks.
If I might continue, is our cost affected positively or negatively if it's an emergency or not? Would there be savings to the city?
No.
If it was all done proactively, preventatively in advance?
The participation policy is the same. It would be if the, if the plumber has to come out on a Sunday and do some work and there's some extra charges. And I, you know, we're not seeing that. So, you know, we get a quote and the quote is a lump sum and it could be 18, it could be 12, it could be 25. It depends on how deep it is. If it's the sanitary sewer main is really deep, it takes a lot of effort to get down to that depth like that and takes extra time and extra cost. So the depth controls a lot of that too, as far as the cost.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpack?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Item 33, Request from Commissioner Strand to direct City Attorney to draft resolution for an amendment to the Home Rule Charter to add two commissioners to the Board of City Commissioners. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'll, before I vent some motion, I'd like to kind of gauge where we're at. If that's okay with the commission, if you want to have it limited and have a motion, please let me know. When I was elected in 2016, and that was, there was a lot of discussion about people winning with 14, 15, 16% of a total vote turnout. And Commissioner Grinberg and I prevailed in that election. And then you might recall, we created a task force to look at overall election issues. They looked at the topics of districts and wards. They looked at the topic of approval voting. They looked at the topic, as I recall, of, of how many commissioners. Commissioner Preston sat on that task force. I believe Commissioner, former Mayor Bruce Spurnus sat on the task force. Commissioner Garrigan, Commissioner Grinberg were also our representatives on that task force. What came out of that was a unanimous recommendation to increase the commission size, a mixed recommendation, whether recommendation whether or not to consider wards or districts. And even Commissioner Grinberg, if I recall, had a strong desire to move the election to November as opposed to June. There were discussions about types of elections, like ranked choice voting versus approval. We didn't embrace any of these. The citizens took the topic of approval voting to the people, initiated a measure, and it prevailed. And now, the city has approval voting. The discussion about, none of them prevailed in our commission. The idea of creating, not a single recommendation from the task force was embraced at our commission. And, is that my cue?
No. Sorry.
So, you know, this isn't about me. This isn't about John Strand, what he thinks or what he wants. It's, it really is about, what do the people want? You know? And that's where I'm at. I'd like to know, what would the citizens like from us? The issue, the topic of what type of governance we have, whether we're a commissioner or council form of government, is a really complicated discussion. And it's a really, it's a road to go down that you don't do lightly. You know, and then if you do implement wards, and if you, you know, that's just a really, that's something that needs to be vetted very, very seriously. Whether or not we just add two commissioners is a simple discussion, while we'd be still voting at large. And I'm not going to presuppose where my peers on this commission sit. I can understand that, you know, I kind of like five members. I kind of like the idea of being one out of five. But I also know that it's us. And with the growth of our community, the population diversity in our community, with, I think in our, if I recall, in our last election, we had fifteen people running for commission, four or five of them were representative of diverse groups. We had the Americans, we had a Native American, we had more women than, you know, which is a diverse issue. We now have, the first time in history, two women here, ever, first time ever. We had, we had LBGQ candidate. It was really interesting to see the people stepping up and wanting to serve, the BIPOC community especially. My thinking is, I'd just like to see what the people want. You know, when this city hall was built, you might note, we have seven seats up here for seven commissioners down the road. It was anticipated, someday, inevitable will happen. When we built our city hall chambers upstairs, we have seven commissioner offices, not five, or not four, but we have seven total, including the mayor. So, the, there's no, it's not a surprise, this someday probably will happen. My, Nancy Morris knows that right before the June election, I advanced a request to our legal department to help me understand what were the procedures that would be needing to unfold if ever we were to go down this path of putting it to a vote of the people. And I missed the window then to get it on the June election. I had hoped to do that, to bring it to our commission, to have us discuss it, and put it on the June election, have the people decide, do we want more commissioners or not? That simple. I missed that window. So, then after that election passed, and I wanted the dust to settle, the dust has settled, we're all now here, then it occurred to me, well, we could still do this in November. We could still have the people tell us in November if they want more commissioners or not. And then, if the commission went forward, then we'd know their wishes to breathe life into it. So, that's where I'm at. And I'll be happy to hear any discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll advance a motion. But that's the gist of it, is I'm advancing the topic that we consider bringing it to a vote of the public, to increase how many representatives will be there at large.
Commissioner Colpak?
I would like the city attorney pleased to explain this, the logistical process here, so we're all on the same page, and the citizens understand what John, what Commissioner Strand is asking for, and, you know, how it would proceed from here.
Sure. The way we've looked at this, it would be an amendment to the Home Rule Charter. Right now, it provides for four commissioners and a mayor. It would be changed to six commissioners and a mayor. And the Home Rule Charter also provides as to when they would be elected and for what terms they would serve. So the Home Rule Charter would also need to address if, if and when, if there is an addition of two commissioners, when they would be elected and what their terms would be. And that's something that we would need the city commission, by resolution, to approve for inclusion on the ballot in November. There is a sixty-four day deadline prior to the election for any inclusion and publication. So this would have to be completed by August 22nd at the latest to move that forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
Mr. Chair, so to me, I agree with Commissioner Strand about vetting it. I think this should be vetted seriously as well. And to me, some of the questions would be, what will be improved by two additional commissioners? What are the, what are the benefits? What is this going to cost? What are the additional costs? Because it isn't just the two salaries, it's also support staff, all the other things. I think we need to know that as well. And then, how will that be paid? Are we going to raise taxes, or are we going to reduce another department? Because it's not free. So, those are my questions, and I'm looking forward to getting some more facts. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Preston?
So, I'm okay with taking this to the public and having a vote on it. I have made this statement more than once, I think, in the past, where we have evolved into something other than truly a commission form of government, and we need to have that conversation in the public arena. And that just hasn't happened. So, I'm thinking maybe this would probably bring the whole topic of how our city government is functioning, and whether there's a better way for it to be effective and efficient. The second thing is, you know, having this done in the election in November is a great idea, actually, because the turnout in November is so much better than when our city election occurs. This last city election, there was probably a twelve, maybe thirteen percent turnout. It's terrible. The, probably the government or the elected officials that have the most impact on individuals and their properties are the local elected officials. And all three, park, school, and city commission, are being elected by twelve to thirteen percent of the population. So, that's another issue that we need to look at. But, in the meantime, I'm good with this one.
Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
I'd like to advance my motion if I could. I believe it's on the screen, is it available? So it's, the people can read it? I'm not sure.
Can we put it on the screen?
I'll read it in the meantime while they're looking to post it. I move to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution for an amendment to the Home Rule Charter of the City of Fargo to add two commissioners to the number of members of the Board of City Commissioners. I further move that the resolution provide that if the electorate elects to add two commissioners, that such commissioners be elected at the next regularly scheduled election in June of 2024. I further move that the lowest vote recipient be elected for a two-year term, and the remaining three commissioners be elected to four-year terms, resulting in three commissioners being elected every four years. I further move that the two-year term be deemed a full term for purposes of the term limit ordinance consecutive to any other terms as commissioner or mayor for purposes of determining maximum length of consecutive service.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but it certainly would have been nice to have had that in writing in front of us. It's long. Is there any way to get it up on the screen? No?
You guys don't have it. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just think it's interesting, this is just a comment. It would have been nice for Commissioner Colpak and myself to have four positions to run for instead of two. That would have increased our opportunities. And I think that's very interesting, that the two commissioners are making the motion and seconding it will be up for election at that time.
Mr. Strand?
I have a question for our legal counsel. For the sake of public discussion and engagement, does this have to be decided tonight, or could this be decided and still happen or not in our next meeting? Or is tonight Nancy the deadline to meet your timeline to post if we needed to?
So, looking at it, we were looking at whether or not this should move forward. I would present that resolution at the next meeting for consideration. And if there were any changes or additions or anything that needed to be made on August 8th, it could be brought August 22nd for final approval and adoption. So, if I don't have direction today, you know, I'm not sure what I'm putting together, to be honest. So I want to present something to you for consideration, if that is the wish of the
This is an interesting proposal that brought forth, and Commissioner Strand and I talked about it for a while. Part of the reason I'm not going to support it is that sometime we tried to do a government, look at the government, see if we can do it better. And we had five people stand up for a seven-person committee. We couldn't fill that committee. I don't find the public really greatly interested in this right now. We have very efficient community government. We have a good commission, it works well, we're efficient, we're expeditious, we have diversity, we have rody different things on that. Minot went from fourteen to seven, Grant Forks went from fourteen to seven. They downsized their commissions and councils and found it was a little burdensome to do that. It appears to me what we're doing is adding two for just the reason of adding two more, not necessarily that it'll make us any more efficient as a government. Not that all of you have recommendations and things you need to do, and the portfolios you are. Adding two more commissioners will put burden on the staff, because we'll have two more people that want different things looked at. Work product that we have with our staff is there, and it sits there, and this commission decides on it. I think they've done an excellent job. We did have fifteen candidates vote or come out for the election, and we had a great election. We had people that got out and raised their priorities or what they wanted to do. I sometimes think we look or search for changes, but aren't sure what we're trying to fix. And I'm not sure what we're trying to fix right now. I think the commission's form of government has worked well. I think the way our administrative team works well. And from my position, I see no need to change it. But I'll let you guys decide what you want, so.
Mayor?
Commissioner Colpak?
So I've given this a lot of thought. I did say during the campaign, I supported increasing the commission as Fargo grows. And having said that, I also need to understand all the implications of adding two more commissioners. I read the report from 2016 over the weekend, and I understand they met eight times and they did a lot of work, and I commend their service and work at the time. They did recommend adding two additional commissioners at the time, but that recommendation was turned down by the commission as well. Today, and I have not talked to the mayor about this, I am not sure what the problem is we're trying to solve right now. Granted, I have only been on the job now for a month, but I meet every day with city employees and departments, and continue to be amazed by the work of city employees and leaders. And my experience is that our efficiency is one, runs very efficiently and runs well. City departments, like every business in our community, are also struggling to hire positions and attract folks because we still have some work to do regarding employee salaries. Just last week, I met with a group of incredible city employees who are, in fact, part of our first responder community, who have real concerns that need to be addressed as far as their competitive salaries to ensure we keep them and reward them fairly. In addition, every city bid we are opening right now comes in at a higher cost, which in turn takes more tax dollars. We are also in a unique position right now because we are getting to ready to hire a new city administrator. And depending on that process and eventual selection, the new administrator may bring some insights or ideas that may result in some future structure or realignment recommendations. Finally, the fact that approving or not approving this tonight is the only window to ensure enough time to get it on the November ballot, leaving only three and a half months' time ahead of the vote to educate citizens and get engagement, I think is concerning. So for me, while at a basic intuitive level, I can see supporting adding additional commissioners as Fargo grows with additional specific rationale and parameters. And after more in community engagement and feedback, I will not be supporting this
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Item thirty-four, recommendation for the city administration's election process. You have in your packets the new revised idea of what to do. I don't know if Jill's on. Is she on virtual? She was ill today.
I am here, Mayor.
Okay. So if you want to explain it to me, or you want me to explain it?
Sure, I'm happy to, if you would like.
Yeah, I'll just put out there that we have, when we go to all five commissioners helping make this decision, it goes into open meetings. And one of the requests of you all is to get good candidates coming forward to this position. So Jill and I figured out a hybrid, but ultimately, you will be picking the new head administrator. But we're going to add some department heads, because they'll be working with the person as well. But the vetting and those things, Jill explained how we'll do that, so we can have, basically look at any candidate that would apply. But once we go down to our final three, that will be open meeting. And then the commissioners and the department heads will meet openly, just like we did for the police chief. So we will all be involved with that process, and would hope rankings and such, it basically be a joint decision. Go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor has outlined, this approach really would allow to maintain a hiring manager, the mayor is the hiring manager, to discuss process details and coordinate with the search firm and the HR team as we make our way through the process. But the actual review of the applicants, the interviews, and ultimately, the selection for the position would involve the full committee, including all commissioners. So if this approach is approved, we would move forward, working with the search firm, and work with them to determine a timeline and a recruiting plan for the position. And then the search firm would likely handle the initial, you know, recruiting and initial screening of our applicants. And once we had a pool of applicants, we would then convene the committee to begin reviewing those applications and determine which applicants would advance to a first-round interview. As the mayor had said, there is a provision for executive session to discuss applications before finalists have been named. But certainly, those final interviews, once we have our finalist candidates, then would be, would be public meetings. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions by the Commissioners? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Whether I ask the mayor, or my colleagues, or Jill, I'll make a statement first. My desire would be for us to, as a group, convene informally to talk through what we're looking for. You know, rather than just sit in the background and have somebody create an RFP or a request and advertise for a position, and we haven't talked it through yet. And the reason I say that is, you know, as I understand it, when Pat Zawarol was named city administrator and Mayor Walcker was here, it was, as I recall, they had a strong city manager system. And then, there's also discussion now about a full-time mayor or not. And I don't know how that would implicate or impact a manager. You know, my experience comes from the school district, where you have one employee you supervise and oversee, and that's your superintendent, and you really have a roadmap for the role that that point person has. In my head, I'd like to see us really fine-tune our expectations of the manager in light of discussions of other potential changes coming. So if we could just simply have an informal internal discussion among ourselves, so we're all on the same page, what we're looking for as we reach out, that's what I would like to see.
So there's a job definition now, but Jill, could we go into a session, will candidates just have that discussion, where it's not open?
I am not aware of any provision for that, but I would defer to Nancy to respond on the executive session for that purpose.
I, too, am not aware of an opportunity for an executive session under 4404-19.1 for that reason. 4404-18.27 does specifically address when an executive session... 4404 18.27 does specifically address when an executive session would be appropriate when you're considering candidates for the position.
So we could do it, we could do it open anyway.
Yes, you could.
Would that satisfy what you want, John?
Yes, Mayor. Before we have candidates, before we have applicants, before we advertise, just so we've had our own internal discussion, but we all know what we're looking for. So that wouldn't mention any names or know we need for an executive session. Just, and there might not be any surprises, but I benefit from talking through the job description of the city administrator and its city administrator. And relative to the mayor, frankly, too, and to each of us.
Other discussion? Can I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 35, recommendation direct Engineering Department to amend the documented CATX and present a change order on a contract on 32nd Avenue Reconstruction Project to include a right-turn lane on 25th Street. Commissioner Kolpak to explain.
Yes, at the last city commission meeting, the Engineering Department sought our approval of the award for the reconstruction of 32nd Avenue. And at the time of the presentation, there were considerable discussion about adding the right-turn lane and should there be an amendment to add that to the motion. And a motion was made to amend the motion to include the right-turn lane. I voted to reject that motion at the time because I felt like I did not have enough information as to costs or process similar to my recent vote tonight. And I also knew there were some time constraints regarding the bid award that could have jeopardized that award. During the summary by engineering, the engineers stated that the turn lane could be addressed by a change order after proper steps were taken, including an amendment to the documented CATX and the presentation of an appropriate change order, both of which would require further approval by this commission. I am of the opinion that these additional steps should be undertaken and the matter of the right-turn lane properly brought to this commission for consideration, which would include an additional vote at the next, when that information is presented. And it would also include information around safety. But I do believe that 32nd Avenue is a major corridor and I think all of those considerations should be vetted and then we should make our decision with information in front of us. So I would like to make the motion. If I can now?
Yep, you may.
I move to direct City Engineering to amend the documented CATX and present a change order to the contract for the 32nd Avenue Reconstruction Project for purposes of consideration of the addition of a right-turn lane on 32nd Avenue and 25th Street and bring the same back for final approval.
There are second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Trump?
Mr. Preston first, then Mr. Strand.
What would be the timeframe for them to come back?
They would, that's a great question. When would they come back with the recommend, from Engineering?
Brenda's standing up.
Yes.
Slowly coming to the podium. Thinking.
So, so two weeks ago, we recommended the award. The contract will be coming back. Usually that's on consent agenda. And so we'll be bringing the contract with the contractor back in a consent agenda form. And so in my mind, I would see this happening after a contract's awarded. So right now, the commission has recommended award of the project. The auditor's office is working on the contract. That will go on consent agenda. Through this process, then we can start looking at, you know, what costs would be associated with adding that turn lane. And it was our thought we would bring the adjustment, the amendment to the CATX, which is the environmental document, along with the change order. And you would have all that information in your hands to make your final decision.
Question was how long?
I would like to get the contract signed first before we start implementing change orders. And so I would assume at least within the next two weeks, you would see that contract. So maybe over the next month, we would come back.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Strand.
So here we have a situation where we've awarded a bid. We asked for RFPs and we got them. And now, before the ink's even dry, we're going to change and ask for a change order to something we don't know. And we, and we also have precluded the ability to have competition for that aspect of the bid. If the change order comes after the RFP and the original proposals went out. So that's a concern to me, but, you know, and when change orders come back, I don't know what the intent is to have us put that on the regular agenda or the consent agenda. But right now, change orders go on the consent agenda as a routine. We have five in this meeting, change orders. But here's my question. Has, Brenda, if you could come back. Remind us the recommendation we had regarding this from Engineering and from traffic. As I recall, it wasn't a recommended design to include.
So we came in front of the commission twice. The original recommendation had the westbound right-turn lane in the recommended motion. There was discussion at the dais and asked, what could we do to make this more pedestrian-friendly? We had removed some of the medians, tried to mitigate some of the speeding. We went back and evaluated what opportunities would we have. Removing the right-turn lane with the traffic counts was one thing that could happen. And so, so what I would say is the original, the original presentation had the right-turn lane in. The second presentation had it removed.
And if I might, if I recall, Jeremy, when he presented to us, that to us, was clear that they didn't see a compelling reason that would, to include it, that the traffic wouldn't be negatively or adversely impacted.
So, so here's what I'd say. Is the original recommendation, you have right-turn lanes on three of the four corners. The other two turn lanes, the traffic counts are way too high to even consider not reinstalling them. The one, the westbound to northbound, they probably have as many turns as north to east, and that does not have one. So if, if the vision is pedestrian-friendly and to shorten that distance, that would have been the one that could get removed. So it's there today, but that would be the one if we wanted to make changes that could be removed.
Thank you.
Mr. Kolpak.
Another comment? I would, I would expect that this, when it is up for reconsideration, if it passes tonight in front of the full commission, it would be on the regular agenda and not part of the consent agenda. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, just follow up on a bit. If a contractor gets a bid, we don't RFP any change orders. The original contractor continues with that. So the change, if we do a change order, it stays on the bid. And I think what you're trying to see is how much is the additional cost? We get to vote on that as that comes through. But we have change orders all the time in Engineering that go through PUPAC and then come to this commission to approve, oftentimes on consent, John, which you know. Mr. Strand.
What's the engineer's estimate of this cost if we were to have it included? Because we would have had engineering costs upfront.
Correct.
Is it a little amount or a big amount?
The, are you asking about the construction?
This aspect, this adding the right lane, I'm curious what the engineer's estimate would be for this change.
Off the top of my head, we're thinking no more than $40,000, if that. Because we have to put in curb and gutter regardless. So what you're looking at is additional concrete pavement is all. So it's just the square yardage of that concrete pavement and the gravel base.
Mr. Preston.
Brenda, remind me again, you said the northbound coming from the south going north does not have a right-turn lane going east?
Correct. We do not have the, we do not have the right-of-way to support. We've never had the right-of-way to support that turn lane.
And I would think, you know, what the traffic count is coming from the south going north there and turning east?
It's very equivalent. It's right at the same, like 100 vehicles. It's very equivalent to the other direct, going west, turning north.
Yeah.
Yep, they're both right about the same counts.
Gotcha.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Request for extension of compliance order on 717 3rd Avenue North. BB House, Trenton Garrett's to explain.
Thank you, Commission, for letting us present here today. My name is Trenton Garrett, Executive Director for the Cascay Lake Community Land Trust. And with me tonight is Sam McDonald, our Operations Director. Again, just wanted to request an extension from a February 21st, excuse me, February 2021, extension of a compliance order related to the property at 717 3rd Avenue North in Fargo. Just to give you a quick update here on the land trust and some of the things that we've been doing. Our focus is really to leverage public and private resources to help write down the purchase price of homes to make them affordable for lower income, low to moderate income families so they can purchase houses. To date, we have developed six properties throughout our area and continue in 2022 here to develop four more properties, including a twin home on First Avenue South here, which should be starting construction shortly, as well as working with a local nonprofit to acquire 26 units here in South Fargo at the end of the year. Looking ahead real quick, in 2023, we are anticipating also building another three units and then acquiring another 17 units as well through a partnership with a, with a city government. Quick updates here on the status of 717 3rd Avenue North. Since the original permit was awarded back in February last year, there were some concerns with the inspections. All of those have been remedied. So the pillar has been put back in place, the foundation has been stabilized, paint has been redone and the like. And there's been no more, no more addition, or no more complaints as relates to the inspections. Since that time, we've also had a new clearly defined, new clearly defined project or purpose for this property. This actually is going to become the officer for the Cascay Lake Community Land Trust here once upon completion of the, of the work. We have begun our capital campaign as well. We began that back in March and continue to raise money. And as of July 8th, the previous owner generously donated the property to the land trust. So we are the current owners of the property as of July 8th. Just a real quick photo of what the property looked like back February timeframe and now what it looks like today. So as you can see, there's been a lot of work already done to that, to that property. If we look a little bit more into what our plan is, we are going to continue to engage, working with Killborne Group to help lead our construction, our general, as our general contractor. We are anticipating that the total project goal is $700,000. $450,000 of that is actually for construction and rehab work. This fall, we'd like to pour a new foundation that runs the entire, full basement. We plan to move the structure 12 feet to the east, as well as adding a 20 by 20-foot addition onto the back, which was originally there and has been taken down years ago. As you can see, the rest of our project there. We, we will also remain, this property will remain in the Cascay Lake Community Land Trust, which will then also make sure that it is part of our portfolio, which means it will remain affordable for charitable purposes as well as a community resource well into the future. A third of our goal is actually designated to an FM Area Foundation Endowment, which is geared to make sure that we have dollars to provide for the maintenance of this building and upkeep to ensure that it doesn't enter into this status in the future. And this is also just a great demonstration of what a land trust can do to help save at-risk neighborhood, pocket neighborhood in the last single-family neighborhood in downtown Fargo. If you just look real quick, here's a site map of where it is or what we're kind of looking and then actually a blown-up part of it as well. Kind of give you an idea that we're talking about moving the building 12 feet over. We are looking to make this a commercial building, as we said, as part of our office. We would have to add some ramps and some other concrete work as well to it. So it gives you an idea of what we're looking to do with the full scope of our project. Here's an artist, the next slide is an artist's rendering of what it would look like when we're done. So again, adding that 20 by 20 addition onto the back. Project timeline, as I mentioned before, we have started our fundraising efforts. We have currently raised over $200,000 in cash and in-kind donations. We are, we would, upon approval, we would apply for a commercial construction permit here yet this month. In early September here, we, or, excuse me, in August, we would remove the, the structure from its current location so that way we could pour the foundation and then place the, the structure back onto the foundation once that was complete here in September. We would then continue to do the refurbishing of the inside of the current structure that's there over the winter months, as well, as well as then. Once construction can begin in March or so, we would then add on that 20 by 20 addition, continue to get the certificate of occupancy in July of next year and then having our, our grand opening then in August of that, of 2023. So why, why we're here and why we're asking for this request? Because of a few of the things that have changed over, over time. The reason why we're asking for the extension is based on the fact that we have new ownership. As I mentioned, Cascay Lake Community Land Trust now owns 717 3rd Avenue North. We have a new project, more clearly defined project and purpose for this property, as well as we have secured funds that will allow us to pour the foundation and begin the inside work yet this fall and through the winter. I also want to note that to date, we have not asked for any public funds or received any, nor are we requesting any at this time either. We have also talked with city planning as well as inspections and they have no objections with our plans at this time. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a slide, I clicked ahead. Contingency. In the event that fundraising goes a little slower than anticipated, we will be working with our contractors to, to decide adjustments that need to be made, that need to be made on the refurbishing or even some of the inside details as well. As I mentioned, we do have, we do have enough funds for the current foundation or the new foundation, as well as a structure to move it and put it back in place and to start our interior rehab work. So that I'd ask for the city commission to request us an extension on the order compliance from February of 2021.
How long do you want the extension?
Till August of '23.
August of '23. Any questions of commissioners?
Mr. Pepcorn? I have a couple of comments. I guess, obviously, the Community Land Trust, it's a great organization. We're fortunate to have them. So this is not directed at them, but I think we were here with the past owner and made promises that he obviously didn't deliver on. And so that's the frustrating thing to me. And to me, the neighbors that have been around this, and I don't know if we have pictures available, we can put them up, what it looks like now. I drive by there all the time and it's awful. And so that's, that's why I hesitate giving him an extension because we've, this has been this way for decades. And I, I don't know. To me, that's, that's the thing. I don't want to get confused the, the Community Land Trust with this issue, but it's like, this, this has been going on. And if you drive by there now, it's nothing but weeds. And it's an eyesore and there's pigeons and, like the picture that they showed, that's not now. If you drive by there right now, it looks awful. And so that's, that's my hesitation. I'm, I'm pleased that they're, they're having plans, but I'm sorry, the, the past representative did tremendous damage for you. That's, that's what I'd say. And I noticed that he's not here today and I'm not surprised. Because I think he's an architect professor and to be honest with you, I'd be embarrassed. So that's, that's my perspective. If you can show these pictures, they speak louder than words. There's still pigeons. To me, that's a, that's a very impressive weed collection. But as far as, how would you like to be their next-door neighbor? you like to be their next door neighbor, which literally there's multiple houses that are their next door neighbors. And so that's, once again, I don't want to confuse it with the Community Land Trust, but man, it's, it's, it's an eyesore. And the saddest part is this is a historic treasure for the city of Fargo. So I'm just a little disillusioned at this point because it's, it's, it's still, it's still dilapidated. So, all right, I'm sorry for rambling on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Preston?
Trenton, can you remind me again, you probably covered this, you've actually legally taken ownership of the building. At what point and what would be the first improvement to be made? Is it the foundation? And what's the timeframe with that again?
Yes, we took ownership in July, on July 8th and our first, our first construction, I guess would be adding the foundation, so picking up the house and moving it off-site and pouring a full basement or foundation 12 feet to the east of where it currently is now, and then, and then replacing the house onto that new foundation.
And you do have the funding to do that part?
Yeah, yes.
So it, it won't be occupied until the whole thing is done, which would be 2023?
Correct. If, if we do have enough of the insides done here by the end of winter, so like in March, we could potentially move in as, as early as then, provided the certificate of occupancy could be obtained then, water and some of those things as well.
One more question. What about the pigeons? Because I know that's been an issue.
There, there are a lot of pigeons within that, within that community. The best of our knowledge, none of them are roosting in the BB House. And certainly, once the work is completed, they won't be in there either. So they are roosting in neighbor or other neighborhood properties, but not at the BB House.
Oh, I know we have problems with them at our building too, so.
And I would just like to just, if I may comment on Commissioner Pepcorn's thoughts, you are right, this is what the, the weeds look like, looked like. Since we've taken ownership, those are now gone and we plan to maintain that site and maintain that as well. So I understand the frustration with previous owners, but that's not us.
Can you explain to me a little bit, Trenton? It looks like you're putting a modernistic addition onto it. Did I miss reading that architectural showing or are you going to have something that blends with the neighborhood?
It, it is going to blend with the neighborhood. So this has been done by, this drawing has been done by Milk Jürgens as part of the design phase of it, so it will be matching. This is just the, the first rendering of what that will look like, but yes, it will match the neighborhood.
Okay. Commissioner Strand?
And, and the historical integrity of the, of the building.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. For, for the sake of disclosure, even though I am, I'm fully participating and do not expect to declare a conflict of interest, I will disclose that I sit on the Land Trust's Board of Directors and I don't have a fiduciary gain out of this discussion or action. But I'll say this, as a old historic building hugger type person, this is a win for our community to take something that was one vote away from being demolished. And yes, it was in disrepair and it was rundown and yes, it was an eyesore and it was a public health hazard, but, but, but this is where we've gotten to, where it's going to be a victory for the future for generations to come. I can't even begin to say how excited I am to see this be the home of the Cask Lake Community Land Trust and to have their, their reach out into that historic neighborhood, which is so relevant to our downtown. I just can't, it's, it's amazingly a good result out of a potential loss that we couldn't calculate. So thanks to you, Trenton, and, and your, your folks and to Sam, who is also on a community development committee, to Heather, is it McCord, I think? You're not saying much, you're not taking credit, but it, it shouldn't be not, it shouldn't be unnoticed that you have played a, been a rudder in aiming us for our future and connecting us all to each other. Thanks to Ron Ramsey for bequeathing this to the, to a good use. In his moment in life, this is a good, good resolve. You know, at that point in time when you're retired out and your, your health is a challenge and everything, you know, it's a great victory for all of us. Thanks to the neighbors who've had, you know, given us a little room to get something, come out of it versus just the loss. Thanks to the Kilborn Group for, for really investing in a vision. Again, you can probably tell I'm really enthused about this and, and.
Can you give a, give a motion then, John? Can you help me out here?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute break and come back at 6:45. Thank you. Call a meeting back session. I think Mr. Colpak's still in the audience, so she can bring her way up. Item 37, we have recommendations for sidewalk entertainer, pushcart vendors and noise ordinance. Nancy Morris has this, then I think Nicole Crutchfield, and boy, we got the whole team here, huh?
I, I can start it because I am the one that gave you the lengthy letter memo, so I apologize for the length of that memo. But I have been working closely with staff to identify the issues presented by the existing ordinances and complaints that have been received regarding the present situations. Like I said, I presented a lengthy, detailed analysis of the issues. I do think the primary issues boil down to process and enforcement. Nicole and Captain Helmick are best positioned to present the questions to you for consideration and are requesting direction and guidance. It is intended that there will be a public comment period and opportunity for interested parties to present written comments before any final revisions are made to the existing ordinances. My recommended motions are simply that, recommended motions for you to consider based on the ordinance as they are presently. With that, I will turn it over to Nicole and Captain Helmick.
Great, thanks, Nancy. To kind of aid in the communications a little bit, the summary up here, the bullet points are a summary of Nancy's recommendations of the city. And we're very appreciative of the city attorney helping us sort out between departments, kind of what we're trying to get, get our arms around the comments and the concerns. As you can tell by the public comments you're receiving, it can be quite confusing jumping around between chapters 18 and chapter 11, as well as we're permitting, in those chapters, we're permitting many different things besides just what you see in front of us. So it all kind of mumbles up together. So with that, Captain Helmick and I are here to answer any questions and to assist in the communications about this. But based on our recommendations, I'll just summarize them real quick in front of you is, in terms of the amplified sound seems to be the heart of the, the issue. And right now, we're suggesting no longer issuing permits for use of public right-of-way unless it's part of it, that for the amplified sound. And that's basically, well, I'll, I'll stop there. In terms of noise, for consistency, raising that up from 50 to 80 decibels and limiting those so that it's consistent across the board and then limiting the hours from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. On the weekends, that causes some confusion going to 11:00 PM for amplified sound. Sidebar performers, I'll let Nancy explain this a little bit more detail, but we're recommending eliminating permitting and refunding the, those that request refunding their permit fees, which I believe are $15 off the top of my head. And then enforcing this enforcement strengthening clarity for non-criminal offenses with fines. We have, along with us, we have a long, longer-term recommendations in terms of, you know, one of the other big complaints is, you know, grease and trash and the bid and the DCP having to put extra efforts into cleaning up our sidewalks. And so those are some longer-term discussions. And one of the weaknesses that our city attorney found is we don't really have a, an ability to revoke permits if we have violators. And so trying to talk about that's going to take us some more time in terms of ordinance preparation. And then in terms of immediate next steps, we wanted to affirm the recommendations that are Nancy's memo or that are in, are in front of you tonight. Open a, of course, we always have open comment periods, people can talk to us anytime, but really have kind of, as we get this ordinance kind of figured out, have a, an official open comment period where written comments can come to the city auditor's office by the third so that we can prepare a packet of ordinance recommendations for you to be received and filed on August 8th and then have that first reading and the second reading following that. And so just to give a little timeline, I think there's a lot of confusion about the public comment. Quite honestly, I don't think anybody wants to shut down food carts or close those or anything where it's really more about the sound and then the food and the grease. It's, it's not really anything other than that. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Captain Helmick if he has any more to add and Nancy.
So just one thing on that, if they're preparing a petition, should they give that to you then, Nicole?
The city auditor.
City auditor, okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Captain Helmick?
Just to reiterate what Nicole said, we are not interested in, in eliminating or taking away sidewalk vendors, sidewalk performers, food trucks. That's really not part of this discussion. What we're trying to do is take three different parts of city ordinance and make them work better together. And how this came up was a couple of months ago, we had issues from the sidewalk performers about the unfairness of the amplified sound and, and some, I think legitimate questions came up during that discussion and we made a decision at that point to allow them to apply for amplified sound permits. We thought that we were within the, the, the realm of the ordinance, but maybe it wasn't the best decision. But ultimately, what we were trying to do is make that fair for the sidewalk performers when you compare that to the, the brick and mortar establishments downtown. But ultimately, what the issue is, is just the noise. We get, we've been getting an increasing number of complaints from folks that live downtown about the noise at all hours of the night. And I think that's the number one issue that, at least what we're hearing, is that people want us to address. So that's really what our focus has been with some of the ordinance changes that we're looking at right now. And we also recognized, based on some of the input from the sidewalk performers, that the previous decibel levels in, in the ordinance are likely too low for the current environment. Many of these ordinances were developed roughly 40 years ago, if not longer, and definitely need to be updated. And that was one of the restrictions that the sidewalk performers didn't really agree with, was the fact that the decibel levels really are just at a conversation level. And, you know, that, when you look at that and you're trying to perform in a sidewalk versus, okay, well, there's a lot of other things that are going on downtown that are causing noise and the sidewalk performers are probably not the biggest issue. But, so we just, long story short, what we, we're trying to do is just clarify the rules for the sidewalk performers and for the, the pushcart operators and the food truck operators to make sure that they clearly know what the rules are and then knowing what, what's going to happen if those rules are violated. And as far as the noise goes, we're, that's most, the most likely element that the police have been involved with is making sure that, again, we have clear rules, clear enforcement options and those fit what the downtown community want. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you. Any questions from the questioning? Commissioner Preston?
So what I'm seeing here is the decibels for 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I know that there's some conversation in the documentation about decreasing that decibel level after 10:00 PM, because there's really no way to restrict street performers at this point, any time of the night, all the way through, right?
Correct.
So it would just be the noise that's getting generated. So would you not, as a short term, and I don't, it's a little bit confusing, the suggested motions, are you not recommending that decreased decibel level after 10:00 PM?
I can speak to that. There is actually a rule already in place that the street performers must cease at 10:00 PM.
Okay.
So that is already the rule.
It's at 50? Excuse me, is that at 50 or 60?
Right now, the decibel level is at 55. So they're looking to increase that to 80 from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but decrease it back to normal levels, which is actually probably closer to 60 after 10:00 PM.
Okay. One more. So it sounds like, as I was reading through everything, it sounds like a lot of this is just enforcement. My question is, does it have to be a uniformed officer doing that?
Well, when it comes to the, the noise, that would likely, that would fall within the police realm, but when you look at a lot of the other violations that are in the ordinance or that we, that we need to review when it comes to the pushcarts or the food carts, a lot of those violations are not police issues, which also leads to an issue that if, you know, a pushcart operator doesn't clean up their mess or, you know, violates other rules that are in place, what happens at that point? And, you know, again, it's not really clear what that process is, but that's likely not a police process, that's likely going to fall on, on planning.
So even with the, excuse me, another question, please. Even with the enforcement of the noise, does that have to be a licensed officer? Yes, within the police department, but does it have to be a licensed officer?
That's a good question. I, I guess our community service officers might be able to do that, but typically the hours that we're talking about, they likely wouldn't be on duty, so the licensed officers would be the ones available.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, a little bit easier to have somebody, because this is going to take a consistent person to be there every night till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and whether you have the resources actually to do that. One other question. 2:00 to 3:00 shutdown time. You know, I agree, people walking out of the bars, they need some food in their stomachs. This is probably the only place they get food. Has, was there some discussion about increasing it up to 3?
I, I don't know that that's been a recent discussion of the hours. It's whether the noise should be terminated earlier. Again, looking to this body for guidance in that, in that area.
Mr. Strand?
You guys are forgetting your buttons.
When we recently approved and discussed and improved the, the creation of gathering points for people post-bars to go and, you know, pick up their Ubers and their Lifts and so on, we created areas. If I recall, I thought somebody said we might also suggest food carts be over there where they're gathering. Where did that all land?
I'm glad you asked that question because I was just going to bring that up, but that is certainly something that we discussed, but I think that's something that we need to look at as part of this larger discussion is whether or not we want to do that. And then obviously getting the pushcart operators' input on that because it's certainly going to have an impact on their business. And, and also along the, the previous question, you know, that those parking rules are in place until 3:00 AM. And so, you know, does it make sense for those to mirror? You know, again, that's something that I think we'll need to discuss and get input on.
Mr. Strand?
Last thing I'll say is, in, in light of the fact that I really love the food carts and that their presence in our community and our availability, I'm, I'm wondering what other cities have really done things with this topic we could learn from. Maybe I already looked at that, but, you know, I'm guessing maybe there might be some, some models we could like explore and bring home to us to, as we, as we work with our food cart people to engage and talk about the best future for everybody.
Can I have a motion?
I move the recommended three-pronged approval of motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
38, application for proper tax exemptions for improvements made to buildings are Bunny R. Mastel. Do you have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
39, liaison commissioner assignment updates. This was the moment in which any of the commissioners who want to update us in your portfolio, this is kind of the time to do that per Mr. Strand's request. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just a couple moments or a couple comments about some of my portfolios so I can, we can keep communicating. With the Sustainability Resiliency Committee, there's discussion about maybe growing our membership a little bit to bring some more community voices into it, so we may have some interest in that unfolding. Probably the portfolio that I have that has the most activity right now is the airport. They're really, they're really up to their ears in, in renovation discussions, terminal expansion discussions, apron, concrete expansion. expansion discussions, apron, concrete expansions. We have a lot going on at our airport, and, and it's just really exciting to see that. That's couched in the fact that we have an airport that's in a growing community, in a growing region, and a growing airport itself. So we have a terrific model there going on, and great leadership at our, at our, at our board there, the Airport Authority. Lastly, they'll be coming to us very shortly with the first-time-ever request to us where they oversee review, review for us what has been done in the past with their city funds, and what they'll be requesting with their next two mills or so, and how that'll be utilized. So that will be a new step for us in that relationship. Last little, minor comment I'll make is, the Native American Commission, Native American Commission is meeting next Thursday, and while they haven't been meeting, there's been an immense communication with the, the community and their constituents in light of the police incident where Shane Letterling was involved with law enforcement and the shooting happened and his death. So that topic is in the background, there's been a lot of communications with the families. Everybody's waiting to see what the Attorney General's reports end up being, but I would say that, you know, we've had some great leadership from the Native American leaders and from, from our DEI Director in, in that capacity.
Mr. Colpak.
Sure, thank you. So my first liaison assignment with utilities, which includes water treatment, solid waste, and water reclamation departments, we had a meeting on the upcoming budget for 2023. And of course, that detail will be included in the mayor's budget report in the next weeks. But I will add to pay attention to the innovative and creative revenues that they bring to the City of Fargo's general fund. Communication update, and part of my updates will include kind of what these departments do, because I can tell you during the campaign, you know, a number of citizens don't really understand the work of our, of our city departments and what they do for the citizens of Fargo. So for instance, the communications team, which I'm very proud to support, having that be part of my background, couple of facts there, they curate, produce, and, and livestream more than 25 meetings a month from the commission chambers. Right now, they're collaborating with the FM diversion, of which I met with this morning, on a new video that will explain financing and how that works for the FM diversion. They are producing a Fargo Public Library Guide video on how to use specific programs. And lastly, they just recently humbly accepted three nationwide telly awards for the comm. Communication and Government Affairs Team's creation of the VAX North Dakota Campaign for overall campaign best PSA and People's Choice Award. So congratulations to the communications team. Fire Department met with the chief and his team to understand their operations and budget, and I'll be getting a comprehensive tour later this week. And they also just held their Fargo, West Fargo Academy graduation ceremony. Thankfully, Commissioner Strand attended that as well last Friday with five recruits graduating, so congratulations to all of them. Arts and Culture Commission recently elected the artist for the new panels you'll be seeing going on City Hall. Now it's to the mayor for final approval. And in August, they're going to have a half-day strategy planning meeting to talk about how to elevate the work of that group. I'm almost done. Fargo Youth Commission, two main focus areas for them continue to be mental health and diversity, and they're looking at developing a program for Black History Month, so more to come there. And we're meeting next month to talk about adding civic and local government engagement into their priorities as well. They're also, by the way, looking for some new members. So if you know of any high school students interested in serving, they're looking for new members. Vector Control, I had a great meeting with Director Ben Prather and Ben Dow, and the residents are already seeing more mosquitoes after recent rains, and they will be continuing to monitor counts to determine if an aerial spray will be needed in the near future. And lastly, Human Rights Commission, they had no meeting in July, so I still haven't met with the Human Rights Commission, but they will be meeting the 3rd Thursday in August.
Commissioner Preston.
You're skipping yourself?
I'll give my last.
Okay.
I'll, I'll cover what you guys don't cover, so.
So my portfolio consists of the Health Department, Planning Department, and Library, which is a new addition for me at this point. Border Health is looking at their bylaws and updating them. They haven't done that for a number of years, so that has been a little bit of a slow process, but that should be coming to the city commission sometime, probably around September. The Health Officer, Dr. Tracy Newman, has been extremely positive addition. It's just been fun to interact with her. She is doing updates every couple of weeks, and in fact, if you all are interested, we could probably get those distributed to you as well. The last one, she talked about a number of things, but one of them was monkeypox, which at the time she distributed this, North Dakota still didn't have a case. We have our first case, actually, I think located here in, in Cass County. And we're watching that evolve over time. Still certainly watching the COVID cases. It's been certainly a much bigger challenge to monitor the level of incidence with that since so many people are home testing, and the severity of the symptoms have probably been quite a bit less with this last round, so. And with her last update, she pointed out very clearly, we definitely have a childhood obesity issue in this country, and we're going to be looking at that one more closely in our September, or our October meeting. Planning is fully up to staff, which is wonderful. The last individual that was hired was as a result of the Core Neighborhood Plan, and he is getting his feet on the ground and starting to, I think, reach out to the neighborhoods. All three departments, library included, are concerned about staff, staffing issues. Library has some requests in for this budget, and the Health Department really is struggling with especially the harm reduction staff. That has been an issue all along. I think it was the Cares Dollars that allowed for a temporary kind of staff adjustment or salary adjustment up, and that is soon to be gone. So hoping to, to see some, some adjustments there as well. And that's about it.
It's a mouthful, yeah, that's the last stuff going on. Press your question.
In the interest of saving people's time, I'm going to pass on my reports. If anybody has any question, I'd love to answer them, but I will pass it to you, Mr. Chair.
You don't want to talk about engineering and construction?
I could go on and on and on, but in the interest of people's time, I'll pass. Thank you.
Basically, my liaison reports, I'm working on the budget very vigorously, as you all will see this week, and we'll go through the different requests. I do appreciate that all commissioners have weighed in on their different delays on assignments and helped us to try to guide the budget. I'm very impressed with the budget teams, worked very hard on it, and I'm hopeful that you will support what's happening. We are in a difficult time with inflation and things going on, so I'd ask the patience of the commissioners on this, but we're going to have some difficult decisions to make, but I think we're trying to address the basic issues within the city and trying to come up with good results for all of you. And that's, I'll stop at that, because I'm going to be talking more this week, so thank you. Can I go to the last gen item? I think, John, did you pull this one? 19-bit award for fuel purchases in the first and second quarters. Ben, how do you do it? How do you get your diesel cheaper than my gas?
Well, that's a pretty complicated question, and this is, this is something we've been doing for 11 years. I'm not the, necessarily the creator of this whole, whole program. Harold Peterson, our old fleet manager, really researched just, and Ken Costin helped us along the way, too. And so we started pre-buying our fuel by quarters back in about 2010. And generally, we see that we're, we're flatlining at pretty decent prices throughout the years, and we're below market what it is. The last two years have been extremely successful. We, last year, we sent, we saved a little over $1 million off of market value, because we do track it and track that every time we buy a load of fuel. And then this year, already in 2022, based on what we were able to bid in the future, we saved about $878,000. So we're asking you to formalize the contract for the first and second quarter of 2023. And this really helps our budget team, because that allows us to set the budget on the fuel of how, the price we have to deal with for the first and second quarter. To give you an idea where we're at right now, in 2028, our average diesel price has ran about $2.72 a gallon, which at the pump, they're seeing about $5.40, so a lot of savings there. And then on our, on live, we've been sitting right about at $2.37 for a gallon of gas for the third and fourth quarter. I keep pretty extensive records on this whole thing, and our overall average for the third and fourth quarter, if you look at it all together, has been $1.99 since we started doing this. And on diesel, it's been $2.26. So we've, we've done very well. We only bid about 80% of our fuel and leaves us that opening, so when prices do go below what our, our quotes are, we buy off a contract, and we take advantage of that pricing as well. So this is really trying to balance our budget and flatlining, so we avoid the peaks and valleys while saving the taxpayer some money.
Very good. John, can I have a motion then to approve the bid?
I happily make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Great work, Ben, we very much appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. We have somebody we want to point out tonight. We've had somebody that comes to our meetings religiously and really enjoys reporting on this. Barry Amundson is going to retire, and this will be his last city commission meeting. I know he'll be bored to death at home, but he will have to cherish these times. He's had a long and storied journalism career, but Barry took important and complicated projects and made them interesting for the readers. I think most of the time, he got it right from the commissioners, what you were trying to say or what you were trying to do. So for that, I think we should give him a round of applause and say thank you. Barry, you can say the whole commission appreciated you, so. Move adjourned?
So moved.
Second?
Second.